We've had a good couple of weeks. No one passed away that we have to remember tonight, so we'll proceed with Pledge of Allegiance. I hope you'll join me.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Roll call for the meeting of November 12th. Counselor McCauley.
Present.
Counselor O'Brien.
Here.
Counselor Shan.
Present.
Counselor Tontar.
Here.
Counselor Vogel.
Present.
Counselor Zied. Counselor Zied is remote and present. Counselor Devlin is remote and absent. Counselor Agaman.
Here.
Counselor Junta.
Present.
Counselor Con.
Present.
Counselor Connell.
Present.
We have a quorum. Ten present, one absent.
Are there any late filed items?
There are no late filed items, although Counselor Junta did put on the counselor's desk.
Joint ad information.
Joint ad information.
Yep. Very well, so counselors, you can review what's on your desks, and we get to that part in the agenda. You can refer to it for your own purposes. Fourteen people have signed up to speak tonight. When you approach the microphone, after I've called your name, please identify yourself. You'll probably pronounce it better than I do. And give us your street address. And I might ask, although you have two minutes to speak, you don't have to use all of your two minutes. And if someone has previously stated a position with which you agree, feel free to say, "I agree" with that person, and your testimony is just as meaningful as if you delivered it yourself. The first name up here is Byron Lane.
Byron Lane, 14 Hart Road. Feel a little bit like Captain Quinn up here. You all know what I do. You all know who I am. I'm here to say nothing more than to speak on the retail vote. I'm the counselor-elect for Ward Six, and my ward spoke highly against the retail vote, 62 percent. What I'm asking the council is to clean up this mess and not pass it on to the next council. So to move this forward and not leave it for us. That's what I'm asking you tonight. And I just want to say, I feel badly for the community and the fracture that I've seen. I think we all need to, like, step back and really look at how we treat our neighbors over this whole thing. So, that's what I have to say. I hope you do the right thing, and I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Connie Preston.
Hi, Constance Preston, 18 Atwood Street. And I am here to ask you to not move forward with the legislation around the marijuana ban. I'm not at all looking for us to overturn the will of the people of Newburyport. I'm asking that we take a pause while the grievance that has been put in place with OCPF is sawed through to the very end. I think it's also important to note that I was the treasurer for the Vote No campaign and committee. It's the first time that I've ever been involved with a political campaign in my life, and I was very confused by the process myself. So what I did is I came to the city clerk's office. I spoke with the city clerk, and I said, you know, "We've not taken any donations, but we have spent money. I'm confused as to what to do." The city clerk very kindly helped me through that process, including calling the Secretary of State's office, where the two of us spoke together with someone from the Secretary of State's office. And the gentleman on the phone was very clear to me that if $1 was spent for any political purpose, that it was imperative that we put together a committee and that we report those dollars. And so we did exactly that. I got the paperwork from the city clerk that day. I filled out the paperwork. I got the signatures, and I filed it the very next day. It is not a complicated process. All of the resources that were available to me were available to everyone else that was involved in this process. I don't feel that I'm above the law, so therefore I followed the law. Now, there is a grievance in place from the other side. Again, I am not looking to overturn the will of the people. I am simply asking that we wait while we figure out what's really going on here, where we know that the state has fully satisfied what's happened, and then we can move on. But it's very important that we see this through before we take any sort of action. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anne Dykes.
I'm Anne Dykes. I live at 12 Monroe Street, and I'd like to echo everything Connie said. I'm the chair of the Vote No campaign. We legally formed as a committee. I've looked at the paperwork. The opt-out is filed, and per state statute, it's not a legal committee, and it's not a legal finance report on record with the city. I don't think that there's anything in the files about that. I think it's probably just nativity on their part. One thing I'd like to echo that Counselor Lane said is I think we need to stop letting this divide the community. I think we need to stop finger pointing and name-calling and assuming people are doing something intentionally, but I'm very concerned about the voters feeling disenfranchised and undermined when they can't trust in the process. We have low voter turnout as it is. So I ask that we press pause until the voters can feel confident in what happened here, until any investigations can be completed. Full disclosure, we filed one day late. I called OCPF and turned us in, let them know that I joined the campaign late. When I joined the campaign, I realized that we hadn't formed as a committee. I brought Connie on as our treasurer. We did it one day late because she got to City Hall five minutes after it closed. I called the Office of Campaign Finance myself, explained to them what happened so that they would know, and they're welcome to investigate us because I know we've done everything transparently and above board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn Skow.
Hi, I'm Lynn Skow. I'm at 75 High Street. I just am here today to speak in favor of the ordinances that I believe will be introduced today to effectuate the will of the voters with respect to opting out of retail marijuana. We've been working on this for a year. The voters have spoken, and I'm looking forward to getting it resolved. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. I can't read the first name, but the last name is O'Brien.
I'm sorry. I should have looked at the address.
Paul, I apologize.
If I can quote The Grateful Dead, what a long, strange trip it's been. This is a process, okay? This whole thing is a process. From the 2016 election, where it was allowed to put -- they gave us an option to put a ballot on this municipal election. That was a process. The election was a process. And now sits before you, after the election, okay, for you guys to put this into committee, which is a process. Everything has worked so far. And alls I'm asking right now is for you to do your democratic duty and continue that process. The option of looking at the financial reports really doesn't have a lot to do with the outcome of the vote, okay? The people have spoken. It's democracy in action. Alls I'm asking is for the good city council is to act on that democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Tom Solemy.
Tom Solemy, 16 Ting Street. The only person who needs a piece of paper, apparently, but this is an unusual situation with the referendum tied so closely to a city council action. I'm not going to say I'm for or against whatever. I've written about that separately, but I just think this is a sort of an interesting precedent for the council at this point, to have a referendum come and then sort of require you to take a vote. I just ask for us to sort of slow it down a little bit. I think the campaign structure, campaign finance questions need to be answered, and not because of the people on the other side. I have many friends on that list that I received like 15 minutes ago. I just think we need to review these lists, and I just would imagine in the future, if there's another referendum question that's backed by, say, a large property owner in town who owns much of the downtown, and an outcome came, and they were filing campaign finance reports the day of a vote, we'd all have some legitimate questions. So just, I don't see the harm in taking a week or two, certainly take care of it one way or the other before the end of this council. I don't want Byron to have to deal with it. But I just ask for it to slow it down, let it go to committee or remaining committee if that's where it is, and just sort through this before you act on it. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Devlin.
Do you wish to speak? Is Sierra here? No? All right, we'll move on to the next person. John Giordano. All right. I really wish people had studied handwriting. But I believe the last name is Ryan, and there's no street address. I think it is Colleen Ryan. Colleen. Does that look like a Colleen to you?
Eileen Regan.
Eileen Regan?
Oh, close. Am I right?
Yeah, close.
Irish, Colleen Ryan.
I don't know.
I'm guessing, I mean.
Come on.
Why don't you write "Please print" on there?
If Eileen is here, or Colleen is here, I'll take you out of order if I skip over you and you identify yourself at the end. Boyd Hancock. Now, there's a name I can read.
Hi, I'm Boyd Hancock from Fort Tilton Street. I won't take my two minutes. I agree with Mr. Solemy. Where? There you go, right there. I agree with everything he said. Thank you.
Thank you, Boyd. Molly Manuel. Molly Manuel. Ah, here we go. Now we have customers.
Molly Manuel, 27 Broad Street. I would like to request that the council table the rezoning of retail cannabis until the opt-out group has filed their finance report. Thank you.
Thank you. Jenny Donahue.
You got that one no problem.
I know. Well, that was easy, Jenny.
Good evening, counselors, council president Jenny Donahue, 18 Cherry Street. And I am here also to echo Connie Preston, Anne Dykes, Tom Solemy, and Molly Manuel. I really would urge all of the counselors to consider how quickly this is jumping forward from just Tuesday's vote, and agree to take a little more time and table this vote for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Kane.
So I didn't think -- oh, I'm sorry. Matt Kane, 63 Crozer Mill. I didn't think I'd have to get up here again, but based on the number of names on the list, I decided I would. This has been an interesting year of my life. I've learned a lot about politics locally, and I've had friends, close friends, on both sides of this argument, and I think the most important thing to know is that we drew out the vote, right? Whether you're for it or against it, there was no mistaking that there was a vote. We had a higher voter turnout, I think, than most of you would have expected in just a council election, not to minimize what you do, obviously. Again, I said I've learned a lot about this, and like I said before, none of you guys get paid enough for this, but, you know, I think the really great thing for me about this is that I met a lot of new people. And this group of a lot of new people that I met in Newburyport that I didn't know before were a true grassroots effort to -- with a common cause. And there's, you know, we filed our finance paperwork that everybody's worried about. There's no smoking gun there. We don't, you know, we didn't have a treasurer and a president. We weren't even as organized as the other side, clearly. This was new to us, but we've done everything that we need to do legally. There's no reason to table anything. The voters have spoken loudly, and, you know, you guys need to now do what, you know, the voters have asked you to do. So, that's all I have to say. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Joanne. 158 Crow Lane, I can read that. Is Joanne here?
Yeah, that's McCarthy.
McCarthy, thank you.
My name's Joanne McCarthy, 158 Crow Lane. I wasn't prepared to speak, but I will say that I'm for the opt-out moving forward. I feel very strongly about it, like O'Brien, Paul O'Brien, and everyone has said that's on that side of the table, that this needs to move forward for the betterment of the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize for mangling your name. Now, there were three people. Is there a Sierra from 20 Orange Street here who had signed up to speak? Going once, going twice. John Giordano. John Giordano. Eileen, we believe it is, Regan. That would be on Prospect Street if it was Eileen Regan I'm thinking of. Okay. That concludes our public comment period. It's time for the mayor's comment. Mayor Holliday.
Thank you, Council President O'Connell, members of the city council. We have a couple citations tonight that we would like to issue before I do my update, and I would like to bring Jim McCarthy and any of the bloggers.
Bloggers.
Bloggers. Bloggers that he has working with you that to come forward, please.
Wow.
Thank you all. This is wonderful.
What a group.
So, the city of Newburyport, certificate of accommodation is hereby awarded to plogging Newburyport. And I would also like to mention that this was initiated by Counselor Con, so thank you for recognizing this group of citizens that have done amazing work in the city. On behalf of the city council and the mayor, it is our honor to present to you this accommodation for the work of several residents involved in the plogging Newburyport effort. Newburyport bloggers help clean up our trails, parks, and beaches and road sides by picking up litter, recyclables, and other waste while walking, jogging, or running. The group has an active Facebook page with 258 members administered by Jim McCarthy and Sarah Spalding. Members will post pictures of what has been collected and wear. Beautification of our city begins with keeping it litter-free, and this group has dedicated their time to take the nature part of our city and truly nurture it through dedicated plogging efforts. On behalf of our city, it is with great pride that we present you with this combination. Thank you. So. Grab a stick. Got to be in the. And I understand that you often are buying some of your own materials that you need.
Yes, I have donated 35 of these plogging sticks. They're out there in the community somewhere. This is an actual, has been seen action, that's why it's so dirty. And I would say, Mr. Mills here is, to my left, has broken three or four of these.
Yes.
He's the king plogger, so we're grateful to be able to do it. Thank you, Counselor Con.
And so now we have 258 people who have signed up and participate. Let's see if we can double that, right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Ms. O'Connell. Okay. So, I think some of us know that we are losing a long-term counselor. We know that this could potentially be his last meeting, and we did not want to let it go by without taking a moment to recognize Tom O'Brien. So, this is a proclamation. Tom, can you come stand? Come over here, too, because we can share the whereases, okay? So this is a proclamation. Whereas graduating from Immaculate Conception High School, yes, for those of you who didn't know, Immaculate Conception was a high school, in 1964, after playing a pivotal role on the Pelican basketball team, and well-known for his highly effective two-handed set shot. And.
Follow him.
And apparently he did it well. And following high school, Tom attended UMass Amherst, where he majored in history. He also participated in intramural basketball and, rumor has it, played basketball with Julius Dr. J. Irving.
Number 32. Yes, sir.
Dumped on Dr. J.
Right, I heard that. No, I threw him the pass that he dunked.
That sounds more like it. Anyway, whereas following college, he received his master's in rehabilitation counseling from Springfield College and was employed at Massachusetts Rehab for at least 38 years, assisting countless individuals to live and work independently. And?
And whereas Tom married his wife Linda Sullivan in 1977, raised his daughter Katie Chase, and coached softball and baseball at Pioneer League Park for many years. Tom has continued to keep score at high school basketball games to this day. And?
Whereas furthermore, Tom spent five years on the Newburyport Water Board and continues to serve on the Newburyport Housing Authority. In short, Tom has helped many residents with various needs over the years in his capacities as a board member and a counselor.
And whereas Tom has served on the city council for 22 years, setting the record for the greatest number of years of service on the council, and served as council president for 11 of those years.
And whereas the city of Newburyport expresses its gratitude and appreciation to Thomas F. O'Brien for his many years of dedication and commitment to the city of Newburyport, and wishes him the very best in whatever he chooses to do next in the future, therefore be proclaimed Tuesday, November 12th, 2009, as Thomas F. O'Brien Day in the city of Newburyport, given under my hand and seal this 12th day of November in the year 2019, signed by Donna D. Holliday and. Mayor President.
Barry Connell.
Thank you. For you.
Wow.
What it says?
Thomas says O'Brien. See if I can read it. Don't be nervous, I might know it. So, "Thomas F. O'Brien, in recognition of your dedication, service, and leadership for the residents of the city in Newport, January 1st, 1998, to December 31st, 2019." Wow. I guess that's all my wife talks, doesn't talk to me for a while. Like I say, if it wasn't for her, 22 years of going to meetings twice a week, sometimes three times a week, sometimes on weekends, and she put up with the phone calls coming from some of the erate, or just hopefully just asking simple questions, but she always took the phone call. The first one, my first year, I'll never forget it, that 6 o'clock in the morning, the phone rang. It was in January. I discussed one in a week ago. Phone rings, and the lady says, "When are you gonna -- do you know when such and such street is snowplowed?" And she says, "Why is it snowing?" So, then the lady said, "Would you have Tom, Counselor Tom, check on it?" And my wife said, "Well, he'll call you back." She said, "Oh, no, people are sleeping. Don't do that." But, you know, I looked up, I went through the past, and I think I've served with 42 or 43 different city councils. I mean, if you look at the people I served with, it's the history in Newport. I served five mayors, and some of them, Al Lavender.
Al Lavender.
What?
Al Lavender.
No, Al Lavender, and Mary Ann Clancy, and Lisa Mead.
And John Mok.
And I served with, not Dick Sullivan, Chris Sullivan, he was named for Lisa when she left. that 6:00 AM on the phone rang. It was in January. I discussed one in a week ago. Phone rings, and the lady says, "When are you gonna, do you know when such and such street is with snow plow?" And she says, "Why is it snowing?" So, then the lady said, "Would you have Tom, Councilor Tom, check on it?" And my wife said, "Well, he'll call you back." She said, "Oh, no, people are sleeping. Don't do that." But, you know, I looked up, I went through the past, and I think I've served with 42 or 43 different city councils. I mean, if you look at the people I served with, it's the history of Newport. I served five mayors. And some of them, Al Lav- Al.
Al Lavender.
What?
Al Lavender.
No, Al Lavender, and Mary Ann Clancy, and Lisa Mead.
And John Mok.
And I served with, not Dick Sullivan, Chris Sullivan, he was named for Lisa when she left. I served with Chris Sullivan when I was on the water board for three months. So, he was mayor for three months, so I served with him. So, really, I served with six mayors, two city clerks, numerous chief administrative officers. I don't have enough hands and figures to kind of, although they seem to come and go. But the good point is, when they leave, they get a better job, so good luck. But it's quite an honor to serve the City of Newport, to serve the residents of Ward Six. I made the, the tent thought it'd be a big shot and run it at Council at large one year, I think about 10 years ago, eight years ago, and I didn't do too well. I was down by 200 votes, and Ward Six hadn't come in. And lo and behold, those people who I love dearly, 494 votes to the person behind me, 200, so I won the large seat, and I came back to do Ward Six, because that's where I started, you know? I'm a Southend boy. I was born in 18 Atwood Street, who Connie Preston just talked about. That was my house. And then I went to, like I said, UMass, and when I came back in the city, we moved up to Mosley Ave when we got married. And been there ever since. We bought her a Zata House, and we're still there, we're still there 42 years later, so, you know. But, you know, it's been with a lot of the city councils, it's just, you know, from Mike Costello down to Jim McGauley, it's 42. I've learned, you know, sometimes we don't disagree in the city council. Years passed, years passed, it was really bad. It got so bad, we had to have prayer. I asked for prayer to start the meetings, because people were just daggers. But now, I think we have a great council here. We might not agree each other all the time, but when we walk out there, we're friends, and that's what it's all about. Thank you. If you want to say, the reason that I might not be able to come to any more meetings, I have back surgery scheduled tomorrow morning at 6:30. This could be my last meeting.
So, we didn't want to take the chance, Tom, of not having the opportunity to recognize you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay, a couple quick updates. First and foremost, I wanted to say congratulations to all the incumbent councillors who were re-elected. I also wanted to congratulate Christine Wallace. I saw her here. Why don't you stand, so people can see you? Congratulations, our new Ward Four Councilor. And McGauley, you know who's been at large, but will shifting over to becoming Ward Five in January. And Byron Lane, you heard speak earlier this evening, who will be stepping up and taking over for us. Also, congratulations to Sean Riordan and Bruce Bennett, who will be returning to the school committee, and our new school committee member, Sheila Riordan Spalding. I will correct her typo before I post this on my blog. Sheila Riordan Spalding is our new school committee member. Tonight, you will be setting the tax rate for 2020. Our finance team is strongly recommending, and I strongly support, that we raise our FY 2020 tax rate to $12.84 per thousand, which is a tax rate decrease of 24 cents per thousand compared to 2019, which was a rate of 13.08. The tax rate decrease is primarily driven by market increases in our commercial and industrial properties in the city, which went up 8.4% this year, where residential values went up 3.8%. As a result of the new assessed values, the average single-family taxpayer will see their tax bill go up approximately 1.9%, which is the lowest increase that we've seen since 2008. In addition. And in addition, 36% of those homeowners will actually see their tax bills go down this year, which you know is not very typical. In the past, because we had the debt exclusion vote for the two-school projects, and the senior community center, and the field project, that we worked with our bonding council, because we wanted to be sure that we were able to keep our AAA bond rating, and were okay with the fact that we used free cash over the last several years to help balance the budget by not going up to the full 2.5%. That is not the case this year. We have an unpredictable economic future looming, as we've been hearing from our economic counselor, Charlie Tontar. There also is concerns about revenues coming in down the road. So, our free cash is the lowest it's been in probably seven or eight years. So, again, I strongly recommend that you increase to the full 2.5% this year. As you know, we have a lot of sidewalk and road work and drainage work that has been really discussed by the council. Couple other quick things. The Low Street National Guard property, D-CAM, got the bids in for the appraisers. We, they picked a low bid, of course, and we will initiate that appraisal process as soon as possible for this two-acre portion. Again, that's been a big piece about how we move forward without knowing what appraisal of the property is. The cost for the appraisal is $5,500. The city is required to pay that. We'll use it out of the money you allocated for the feasibility study for Brown Youth Services, and we hope to have that completed from start to finish in 30-day period. High Street paving, we did receive the report back from ATC, the independent engineer, who came in and took core samples of the road after the striping was removed with a very poor process by Highway Safety, and in fact, it confirmed that the integrity of the road has been impacted by the work they did. So, we're continuing to work with legal, and we will push until we have a complete resolution of that piece. Been pretty frustrated with how long it's taking to get the deeds for all the NRA property. This was a requirement by the Third Reading Committee at the legislators, but I have been assured that that process will be coming to close this week. I'm concerned that we're bumping up against the end of the formal session, and I understand that this vote has to happen in formal session. I will follow up with you on that once we actually get the documents to the Third Reading Committee. Very, very pleased with the work that has been happening at DPS with our snow prep. Had a little bit of a flourish today. We thank you, council, for the capital improvements to, we have two new wing blades for our plows, which was really important. We have three people who will be dispatching backup to Lisa, which we didn't have last year when she was on vacation and got hit with that first snow. And we also have put GPS in all of the city vehicles, so we will know at any time where all the vehicles are, and when they have paved snow, snowplowed a road, and we're using mobile units in all the contractors. We would like to open up a general meeting to the public on December 12th at City Hall, probably 7:00? 7:00, where we will invite the public to come in and meet with all of our DPS workers who will be plowing and learn more about process and procedures for plowing. Would like to remind everyone that you are responsible, as a homeowner or a resident, to plow your sidewalks. If you are having or experiencing difficulty being able to do that, please contact Youth Services. They have this wonderful Snow Angels program, where they are matching neighborhood volunteers who will come and be assigned to your home throughout the season to help clear your snow. So, please take advantage of that. I had the opportunity to sit on a panel at the Smart Growth Alliance on October 29th, and through that was able to connect with other people who are doing very interesting work in the area of CSOs. There is a new device that I believe has been developed by the Germans, which is real-time in terms of measuring bacteria in the river, as opposed to having to wait 24 to 48-hour period when you're doing an incubation process to determine if there's E. coli or other bacteria in the river. So, we are going to be the pilot for this project, and this is part of the $100,000 earmark the legislature has put forward to begin notification, communication, flagging regarding CSOs. So, I will provide more information. I understand this device will be in Lowell, as well as us as the end-users. That will give us some really good information and good data as we move forward. More to come on that, as we learn more about this company and the product. Reminder that the joint, the charter required joint ed and city council meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday night, the 19th, at the Senior Community Center. This is required, so we review our city's finances before we begin looking at the FY 21 budget. We will be serving dinner at 6:00, and the meeting will start probably at 7:00. I am very pleased to announce that I have a new executive assistant in the mayor's office. She starts on Wednesday, November 20th. Her name is Donna. We just have a habit of that, so Donna 1, Donna 2. Anyway, Donna Musamecki, she's from Beverly. She worked for American Airlines and was, oversaw three states and was in Logan Airport during the unfortunate 9/11 issue. She worked for a president of a college. She also worked for vice president of endowment at another college in Boston, and then decided she didn't want to commute anymore to the city, so she will be joining our team on the 20th, and I invite you all to stop by and wish her well, and help her learn the ropes. Also, just thank you all for a great Veterans Day, and especially to Kevin Hunt, who always does a great job, and to all the councillors who participated in honoring our vets yesterday. And I also just wanted to mention that our resource officer from the Police Department, Megan Tierney, was recognized last Thursday night as an unsung hero at the Regional Rotary Dinner in Georgetown, so, thank you very much.
Mayor, are there questions from councillors?
I have a couple of questions. So, in the written report, this, on this NRA dissolution, it says that the legislature, or at least that committee, has asked for all of the transactional records. Why, how is that relevant? Many of those transactions were over 50 years ago.
I understand, and that's why the process has been so difficult, but what do we say? No, we're not doing it? You know, I don't, councillor, I don't know how you respond to a representative in his joint legislative committee that says this is the material we want to review before we're willing to move on this dissolution.
We're not, are we using a lobbyist anymore, or are we, we're not doing that anymore?
Well, we've sort of put that on the side, because we had all this other work to do. But if we get to the point where they start asking us to jump through more hoops, then we'll certainly bring in the lobbyist again.
Okay, because again, they're changing, they keep moving the goalposts.
I know, I know.
All right, and then the other question is on the sewage. I really do appreciate the efforts to get better data and warn people, but how about, what are we doing to stop the pollution? Because, I mean, that's really the issue, and even if we know about it, obviously, it's very detrimental to Newport at the end of the stream. What is the legislature or anybody doing to stop the pollution?
Well, the first thing was to form the Merrimack River Commission. And so, we've had two meetings, and there's another one coming in December. We've been able to bring representatives from New Hampshire down to meet. Congressman Trahan has filed a very large infrastructure bill that would account for CSOs, because this is where it, you know, this comes down to a significant amount of money. We know that Nashua just invested $80 million into holding tanks instead of separating stormwater and the sewage. They are holding it during these massive storms and then treating, releasing. So, we're trying to gather as much information through pulling all these stakeholders together, begin to identify what the cost is, what each of these systems need. One thing that we've done is that we came together and lobbied for the Greater Lawrence District, which involves three communities, because if you recall, two years ago, in October, they lost power for a week, and all the sewage was running into the river. They didn't have a generator. So, that's one thing we did, is that we lobbied the legislature, so now they have a generator, so they won't lose power again like that. So, we're doing smaller fixes at the moment until we can begin to put this massive and support this big infrastructure bill together. So, that's really about what we, the most we can do at this point.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. But I just wanted to say, the new chemical that's been recently identified, the PFAS that now is a forever chemical that they're saying, thank goodness Lowell made the decision not to accept this from the landfill in New Hampshire. Lot of conversation. I was at a board meeting at the Mass Municipal Association at the State House, talking about clean water. This is right up on the radar in terms of what's happening within Department DEP. So, that piece, too, which is also another concern in terms of now something else that's going into the river. Anyway, thank you. Appreciate the questions. Thank you very much.
Councillors?
Have a great meeting.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go through the consent agenda first.
Consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of the minutes for the October 28th meeting. There are no transfers. There are four communications. Communication 202 is the Rotary Santa Parade, December 4th, to go to public safety. Communication 203 is a Class II vehicle license request by R.L. Curry, license and permits. Communication 204 is the same license request, LCA Motors, to go to license and permits. Communication 205 is Ladies Night Out, Run-Walk, December 7th, to go to public safety. There are no first reading of appointments. There is one item coming out of committee, therefore not needing a motion approved. It's Communication 195, Newburyport Youth Hockey Tag Day, December 16th, 2019.
Mr. President, I don't know if this is appropriate time, but Counselor Azid, who is on the phone over there, very quietly on the phone over there, he had asked me to make a motion to waive the rules with respect to roll-call votes on just removals. I don't know if this is the appropriate time, or if you want to wait till after the consent agenda.
Maybe we'll wait for a vote on the consent agenda, then we'll go back to that.
Very good. Okay.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
And I hear second Counselor Jenta. Everyone understands what this rule is? We have a rule requiring us.
We're not doing that.
We're doing consent. Consent agenda first? Okay. Moved and seconded the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Jenta.
Here we go.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules with respect to roll-call votes on just removals.
Just small point of clarification. Because Counselor Azid is participating remotely, there is, under our rules requirement, that every vote, that's every vote, motion removed, motion approved, motion referred, et cetera, requires a roll-call vote. And so, what Counselor Jenta is doing is moving to waive a portion of that, a portion that relates to the removal. Because frankly, we have found over the years, it's tedious.
Point of order, that means we have to do roll-call on the consent agenda. Yes, we do.
Very good point.
And was there a second to Counselor Jenta's motion? Second, second by Counselor Agaman.
Backing up, Mr. President, can I do a roll-call vote on the consent? So, there's a motion approved on the roll-call vote?
There is? Any, just one moment, if there is any, any questions or any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to the roll-call vote.
It's a roll-call vote to approve the consent agenda. Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Azid? Counselor Devlin's still absent. Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Jenta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes. I might remind people that when you're calling it on a remote basis, there is always a bit of a delay, so we can't expect Counselor Azid to be as prompt as he usually is.
Excuse me, Council President, can we accept the mayor's report as a late pile?
We may. Is that a motion?
Yes, motion to accept the mayor's report as a file.
Seconded by Counselor O'Brien. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President, I think on the floor, there's still a motion to waive the rules.
Yep.
As stated by Counselor Jenta, seconded by?
I seconded. I thought that we acted on that? No.
We do not. So, we need to do a roll-call vote on that?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Azid? Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Counselor Jenta?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Point of order.
Having taken things out of order, I think, let me take a point of order, Counselor Vogel.
Shouldn't we do a roll-call vote in accepting the mayor's update?
I, yes. Believe you're correct.
Sorry.
Vogel.
Shouldn't we do a roll call vote on accepting the mayor's update?
I, yes. Believe you're correct.
Sorry.
Yeah, we go. So, we're going to go back to a roll call vote on accepting the motion to accept the mayor's report.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor O'Brien?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Azid?
Yes.
Councillor Agaman?
Yes.
Councillor Jenta?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you for the point of parliamentary clarification.
My pleasure.
Okay, Richard, where are we? We are, updates, so we're two appointments.
We are to the second reading of the appointment, 131 Victoria Finnegan, 10 Boxford Road, number 25 Rowley, Assistant Treasurer until November 1st, 2022.
Motion approved. Motion approved, I heard from councillor O'Brien, is there a second? Councillor McCauley? Discussion. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on a second reading appointment.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor O'Brien?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Azid?
Yes.
Councillor Devlin?
Councillor Agaman?
Yes.
Councillor Jenta?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes. Thank you for the point of parliamentary clarification.
My pleasure.
Okay, Richard, where are we? We are, updates, so we're two appointments.
We are to the second reading of the appointment, 131 Victoria Finnegan, 10 Boxford Road, number 25 Rowley, Assistant Treasurer until November 1st, 2022.
Motion approved. Motion approved, I heard from councillor O'Brien, is there a second? Councillor McCauley? Discussion. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on a second reading appointment.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor O'Brien?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Azid?
Yes.
Councillor Agaman?
Yes.
Councillor Jenta?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
And the outcome was not in doubt. So, it's referred to budget and finance. Order 155?
Order 155 is, council accepts with gratitude from Plum Island Foundation in the form of a ZOLL medical automated defibrillator and related components valued at $2,603 to be placed within the City of Newburyport section of Plum Island, accepted in accordance with 44 Section 53A and 1/2, submitted to councillor Tontar.
Motion to refer to budget and finance.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on this referral.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor O'Brien?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Azid?
Yes.
Councillor Agaman?
Yes.
Councillor Jenta?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
And the outcome of that's not in doubt. Order, order 156?
This is submitted by councillor Jenta, it's with respect to the city council approving, authorizing acceptance of certain parcels of land, 9 Colby Farm Lane, 181 Low Street, 183 Low Street.
Motion to refer to planning and development?
Second. Moved and seconded to planning and development. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye when your voice is called.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor O'Brien?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Azid?
Yes.
Councillor Agaman?
Yes.
Councillor Jenta?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
He's getting quick, he's getting quicker than that. Yep, we're getting there. Order 157?
City council accepts a gift of a 2006 Metalcraft 32 Firestorm Fire and Rescue Vessel, offered by the city in Newburyport, to the city in Newburyport, by the state of New Hampshire, through the New Hampshire Office of Emergency Management, to be used by the Newburyport Fire Department. Councillor Tontar?
Motion to refer to budget and finance.
Second.
Moved and seconded, moved to budget and finance. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor O'Brien?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Azid?
Yes.
Councillor Agaman?
Yes.
Councillor Jenta?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
Order 158?
Pursuant to a referendum both in marijuana retail establishments within the city, City of Newburyport, acting via and through its city council, hereby rescinds its acceptance of the provisions of MGL Chapter 64 in Section 3.
Motion to?
Jointly submitted, councillors Jenta, O'Brien, and Conn.
Motion to refer to budget and finance.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call.
Councillor Vogel wants to talk.
Sorry councillor, I didn't see your hand. Councillor Vogel?
Friendly amendment to council of the whole.
I would accept that, yes.
I'll accept that. Thank you.
Councillor Jenta?
As folks can see, we've just gone through three or four of these that have gone to committee, and just to alleviate fears for the people who maybe are at home and the folks that have spoke at public comment, this is what we do. So, all of the items that I put forward are all going to committee, just as peacefully as the other ones did here, hopefully. And the idea is, they will go to subcommittees. Budget and Finance happens to be chaired by councillor Tontar, so he will have a meeting, and this will be discussed as a public meeting, and everybody is welcome to come to the meeting. And so, everything that's happening here takes time, so there is no rush. The idea is, we go through our normal process as a council, so I want everybody to understand what's happening here. This will go to Budget and Finance, they will have a meeting, and they discuss it, and then it will come back to the council for a vote. So regardless of the things that you might have heard at public comment, that is not how we conduct business here. This is a very orderly function, where all the meetings are published, they're all on the city website, they're open to all to come to, and I hope that you will come to them. And I just wanted to alleviate any of those fears. Thank you.
Counselor, further discussion. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on this committee referral.
Motion to refer to budget and finance, Committee of the Whole, order 158. Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor O'Brien?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Azid?
Yes.
Councillor Agaman?
Yes.
Councillor Jenta?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
That matter being referred to budget and finance, we'll move on to ordinances.
First ordinance is a confirmatory second reading of ordinance 40, so-called kennel and authority ordinance. There was basically a Scrivener's error, where the parking requirement was two instead of one. We thought conservatively would have a confirmatory second reading.
Motion to approve. Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on this matter.
Motion approved, confirmatory second reading, ordinance 40. Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor O'Brien?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Azid?
Yes.
Councillor Agaman?
Yes.
Councillor Jenta?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Ordinance 43?
Ordinance 43, dated November 12th, ordained, Chapter 9, licenses, permits, business regulations, for the following new articles shall be inserted. General ordinance, Chapter 9, prohibition of non-medical retail, marijuana retailers, consistent with GL 94G, Section 3A2, marijuana retailers as defined in Chapter 94G, Section 1, shall be prohibited within the City of Newburyport. This prohibition shall not apply to the sale, distribution, manufacture, or cultivation of marijuana for medical purposes. Jointly submitted, councillors Jenta, O'Brien, and Conn.
Motion to refer to general government.
Second.
Moved and seconded, refer to general government. Discussion. Councillor Jenta?
I think this is probably the appropriate place to say what, what I'm going to say now, is I don't believe that the city has taken the time to congratulate the vote yes, opt-out people. I've heard a lot of congratulations tonight, but not to your group. And I know your group, and I know the hard work that you put into your campaign, and it truly was a grassroots campaign. And I am the city, I guess, so I am going to say congratulations to you on a hard-fought victory, and it certainly was a hard-fought victory, and you deserve that. And I also want to say it from the place of being the Ward 5 city councillor, I just want to personally thank you for the work that you did for my ward, because none of you live in my ward, but you did it for my ward, and I truly appreciate that. Oh, I do have one, and again, thank you. Thank you. We got kind of run over in this process, and you folks stuck your neck out there and took a lot of flak, and I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
I might remind the councilors that, under the rules of the council, and I've given councillor Jenta some latitude in this instance, because I know that this is heartfelt, and a lot of people want to hear his words in that regard, but under the rules of the council, we address one another through the chair and speak to the matters that are before us and not to external matters.
My apologies.
Further discussion of this proposal. Councillor Agaman?
I just have a question. So, this is Chapter 9 of our municipal code, I'm just trying to figure out which agency, which department enforces that chapter, because that will tell us which committee should run it. It might be licenses and permit, it might be public safety, just, that's all.
That's a good question.
Or, I mean, again, you can do it as committee as a whole also, but I just want to make sure we're directing it consistent with our code.
Does the parliamentarian have a view on this matter?
I haven't looked it up, Mr. President, or councillor Agaman, but usually after every chapter, there's an enforcement section, so if you give me a minute, I'll see what I can find.
Councillor Azid thinks that it goes to licensing and permits.
He does.
He does.
License and permits.
I would have thought public safety, but I don't know. I went with general government because I thought it was?
Omnibus.
The easiest for everybody, you know. No. No, you don't agree, no. I was going public safety, but someone changed my mind on the way here, so.
Well, if I may, Mr. President.
Well, the clerk is, the court may be in 93, 94G.
Chapter 9 is titled license.
Maybe in the statute.
Yeah. Well, if I may, to solve the problem, motion to amend, to refer to licenses and permits and committee of the whole.
Second.
Motion to amend, striking general government making license and permits and committee of the whole. Discussion of the amendment, please.
Do we have to withdraw my second and your motions?
Well, I'm changing my motion, or is it, am I taking an amendment on the motion?
That is a friendly amendment?
You can withdraw.
I will withdraw, I will withdraw.
And I withdraw my second.
And then we have a first by councillor Agaman?
Over here.
Councillor Agaman, you would use state your motion then?
Okay, in that case, motion to refer to licenses and permits and committee of the whole.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor O'Brien and Conn simultaneously. You two can slug it out. Discussion. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on this referral.
Okay, it's a roll call on ordinance 43. Now we have before us a motion to refer to license, permits, committee of the whole. Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor O'Brien?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Councillor Tontar?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Azid?
Yes.
Councillor Agaman?
Yes.
Councillor Jenta?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
Councillor Conn?
Yes.
Yes. So it's a license and permits and committee of the whole. Okay, Ordinance 43, please.
That would have been 43.
Ordinance 43, 44.
Ordinance 44, which is an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance relative to retail marijuana establishments. Section five use regulations, VD Table of Use, striking marijuana establishments with retail sales, striking the NP. Also striking use 801 is limited marijuana retail subtype, also striking the reserve section. There are additions to Section 31, licensed marijuana businesses, purposes, definitions, special permit required, license requirements, striking several sections, probably too numerous to read, just of which is, the word previously marijuana retail is permissible to be located in the city, et cetera, et cetera. That's stricken. Again, it goes on for a number of pages. It is submitted jointly, Councilors Jenta, O'Brien, and Khan.
Motion to refer to planning and development in a joint hearing with the planning board.
Is there a second? Council Vogel. Are you raising your hand to second?
No, I was not.
So there is a second.
Second.
Second. Discussion, Council Vogel.
If I may, would it be appropriate to go ahead and do consecutively with Number 45, until we only have one roll call vote, and have both of those go?
Yep, that would be great.
Committee of the whole, as you, as, motion to send both.
To amend, by bundling those two together. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, so what I have before us now is a motion to refer to planning and development and the planning board, both ordinances, 45 and 44, and committee of the whole.
Thank you.
I might ask for an opinion of the parliamentarian on the advisability of bundling two zoning items under one.
Well, you can bundle as many ordinances or orders as one, as the council wishes, particularly for a referral, as long as they're going to the same place. I don't think it's confusing.
Yeah, that's my judgment as well. When they come out, they'll have to be acted upon independently.
Certainly.
Okay. Discussion of the bundled ordinance proposals at this time. Discussion. Council Jenta.
So just to sort of wrap this up, we had four pieces to this. Two of the items that we've, well, one that we have here and one we've already done are exactly the paragraphs that were on the ballot. Okay, so those are both into committee for discussion now. And then two other items would basically bring our municipal code and our zoning into alignment, if that's a good word, alignment, into alignment with the city's vote. Okay, so that's where we are with all of this. So when we're done, everything should be, everything should be cleaned up sufficiently.
Further discussion. Further discussion of this referral. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on referring these two items.
Again, Mr. President, we're referring collectively ordinances 44 and 45.
44.
The planning and development, planning board, and the committee of the whole.
Yes.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council O'Brien.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Zied. Council Agaman.
Yes.
Council Junta.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Connell.
Yes.
One absent, ten yes. Motion passes.
The councilors.
Great.
We're down to ordinances. Committee items.
Right.
Motion to remove Order 148.
Second.
Under budget and finance, there is a motion to remove Order 148 from committee. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I did hear another aye there.
It did.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Council Tontar.
The vote was three-zero to accept this $5,000 gift from Anna Jakes. The gift will go to the Essex County asset-building network and will be used to pay for clinicians that work with parents and students and to help build the assets, in part on substance abuse, but also much broader. So again, three-zero, urge you to vote yes.
Further discussion. Further discussion, hearing none, we'll take a roll call on acceptance of this gift.
This approval of Order 148. Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council O'Brien.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Zied.
Yes.
Council Agaman.
Yes.
Council Junta.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Connell.
Yes.
And the other committee councillor. Tontar.
Just got to take a liberty here. I did put Order 150 in the packet, however, in committee, we decided to hold that in committee for further information. We did receive the actual grant, which we've read. I still have some questions on the budget, so look for that later.
Fair enough.
Motion to remove Order 153, the residential factor.
Second. Moved and seconded. Discussion.
It's a motion to remove.
It's a motion to remove. No discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Is there a motion on this matter, on the Senate Committee?
Yes. Motion to set the residential factor at one.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Council Tontar.
So we discussed this in committee on Thursday night, however, we did not take a vote on a recommendation, because the hearing had not yet been held. The hearing was held earlier today, so I am offering, Mr. Chair, the motion to set it at one. You know, since, what, 1918, the residential factor has been set at one, with one exception, 1986, when it was set at 1.5. For those who don't understand, when the residential factor is set at one, that means that the tax rate will be the same for residences and commercial, industrial, and personal property. All right, so my recommendation is we keep it the same, as has been done with, every year except for one. Generally, the rule from assessors is that if your commercial, industrial, and personal property makes up less than 20% of the total tax levy, the total amount of property taxes collected, that it is unwise to shift more of the burden onto businesses. And so, we're recommending, as the administration did, that we tax the same. In addition, I want to point out just that CIP makes up approximately 12.69% of the tax levy, and the rest, which is 87.31, I think, if I did the math right, is paid by residential. So that relatively low rate indicates, in part, that the, you know, the residential market relative to industrial is stronger and has been increasing, with the exception of this past year. And so I think it's appropriate to set it at one, and I urge you to do so.
Further discussion. On setting of the residential factor at one. Further discussion. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on this matter.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council O'Brien.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Zied. Councilor Agaman.
Yes.
Council Junta.
Yes.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Connell.
Yes.
One absent, ten yes. Motion passes.
The councilors.
Great.
We're down to ordinances. Committee items.
Right.
Motion to remove Order 152 fiscal year 2020 tax rate.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to set the tax rate at $12.84.
Second.
Moved and seconded. $12.84 will be the tax rate. Discussion, Council Tontar.
So once again, we discussed this fairly extensively in committee, but we didn't take a vote, because we couldn't recommend the tax rate until we had done the residential factor. And now that we've done the residential factor at one, we can set the tax rate. The other issue, all right, is whether or not we will take some of the free cash, all right, and decrease the tax rate from an increase of 2.5% to 2.24, to 1.34 or lower. And I think it was pretty much the consensus of committee, of the committee in our discussion, definitively not to do it less than 2.24%, although there was some discussion of lowering it to 2.24%. As you noted, I moved that we not do that. You will note. I, part of the reason is, and the administration already indicated it, is this year, there's been a fairly significant increase in the value of commercial property. Commercial property increased by, I've got it here, I think, 8.6.
8.4.
8.6%. Which is, the first time that's happened in quite some time, all right? So that indicates to you that our commercial properties are in higher demand. The increase in the value of the average single-family home residential was 3.78%. All right, so as you can see, it's less than half the increase. And so if you follow this, the increase of the average single-family home would be, residential would be an average of 1.88% increase, which is sort of around the rate of inflation. All right? The median, it was interesting, the median household income tax would increase by a slight move of 1.93%. That's an indication that lower-valued houses came up more in value than the higher ones. All right? So just so you understand, in the assessment, there's a fairly complex process, where the assessor's office takes information from the registry of deeds, basically does comparisons, classifies structures in accordance with the style of the home. They also look at land and change the assessment of land in accordance to location in the city. So not everyone will experience a 1.93 or a 1.88% change. 36% of the residences in the city will actually have their tax bill go down. The 57%, the tax bill will go up by under 5%, and approximately 7% will have their tax bills go up by over 5%.
Thank you.
Further discussion. I'm not sure who is first, I'm going to say Council Agaman.
I just have a question about the styles. So is there a nationwide, or at least a statewide definition of what the styles would be? I mean, how do they?
I'd refer to the assessor on that one.
Microphone? Would you approach the microphone, because people at home are listening to it.
No, each city and town can come up with their own modeling. So as long as you're consistent within your city or town, you can call them whatever you want to call them.
Okay.
But we do go by, I mean, a Cape style is a Cape style, a ranch is one level. So we try to stay with what, you know, is known out there.
Okay, thanks. Council Khan.
Yes, thank you, Council President. I would just ask that everyone, I learned a lot, actually, during this conversation, even though now this was my, I guess, second, is it second or third year of doing this, but it was really helpful to get a link to a software that could actually show where your house is and how it will be affected by the assessment. And what we learned is, a lot of people oftentimes wonder, you know, will your neighbor have the same rate of change that you will on your property taxes? And part of it was educational, to know that there is this in-depth kind of review of the assessment process. And more than anything, while we were talking about this, we were trying to figure out, is there a way we can relieve burden on residents in regard to the tax-setting process? And another useful information, and actually, the councillor from Ward Four did talk a little bit about it, but there are a lot of documents we got in the Budget and Finance Committee that I think would be helpful for this broader group, even after how we vote here, because I think it is really important for just residents to understand how this process was done. But more than anything, this is what we heard from the assessor and the administration, is how this year is a little bit unique, in the sense that we are actually going to see some no change and actually decrease. And at the same time, as, and I don't mean to repeat, but there is this increase of the burden being taken up by the commercial, the CIP, commercial industrial properties. So this is kind of a sweet spot right now, may not always be like this, and that's why, after looking at the numbers that we were provided, I will be supporting the 2.5% going to the $12.84, $12.84 tax rate. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Council Shan.
Thank you. Actually, this is a question for the assessor. So out of curiosity.
Ethan, would you approach the microphone, please? Or the assessor, I'm sorry, Jill.
How are condos assessed?
Condos are compared with just condo units.
In the same building, or is it condos across the whole community?
Across the whole community.
Okay.
Okay. They're all, we look, we look at a certain period of time, and it's always a calendar year, it's a previous calendar year. So we looked at every condo unit that sold within that calendar year.
Okay.
And we determine, is it a market sale, or isn't it? And if it isn't, we have to take it out of our analysis. So we only use, you know, an arm's-length transaction. But we compare condos to condos.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion. Council Tontar.
Just a little more information, the free cash came in at 1.87 million dollars. So when you consider that, we try to keep a minimum of $500,000 in that line at the end of the year. For state, for, we try to add $300,000 fiscal policy to our stabilization fund, a little to OPEB, the, you know, post-employment benefits, and some to retirement, just to get that up about $300,000. We really, this is a guess, try to set aside another $300,000 for snow and ice removal. Hope this is the coldest day of the year, and also the worst weather, but we've been, had bad news in the past. And so that basically leaves about $700,000 for what, for the capital that we generally do, and for roads and sidewalks, and I think the administration has indicated that, you know, if things work out this winter, that we'll try to do in the spring. So that's why we sort of thought it was unwise to reduce the tax increase from 2.5% to 2.24% because of that. I mean, I remember a couple of years ago, it was 2.0, free cash was 2.7, it's been declining every year. And, you know, we do use that for, for the, sort of the smaller capital expenditures that we don't bond out on.
Thank you, councillor. Council Jenta.
So though I think it's refreshing to hear that some people aren't going to have their taxes go up, you know, it's always important to point out to the folks at home, when you have free cash at 1.7, it means that you were overtaxed last year. That's what that means, is the tax money that you gave last year wasn't spent this year. And then there's a whole host of people in our community, they're going to see their taxes go up yet again, even though we had a surplus last year. So just on principle, I've never voted for a 2.5% increase, and I am not going to do it on my way out the door, so I will be voting no. But I do want that to sink into all my friends at home that are listening. The money that you gave us last year, we didn't spend it all, but we're going to come back and get some more from you. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor. Further discussion. Further discussion. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call.
This is on the motion to set the rate at 12.84 by Council Tontar, seconded by Council Khan. Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council O'Brien.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Zied. No. Council Agaman.
Yes.
Council Junta.
No.
Council Khan.
Yes.
Council Connell.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, councillors. That's it in committee, is that correct? Budget and finance?
That's it, Mr. President.
Education. Council Jenta.
Thank you, Mr. President. So on everybody's desk, I gave you a handout that was given to us by the superintendent, so we continue to ask him more questions on how they develop their school budget, because as we know, we only really see one line item when it comes to the budget. So this was pretty interesting. This is sort of an instruction sheet that he gives out to his staff. And within the, within the sheet itself, there are different forms to be filled out. So if you wanted to add staff, you would fill out this particular form. And what's interesting on the top, it says, "Any new staff request must be offset with a staff reduction," which is pretty interesting. And so, you know, you have to give your costs and your reason why you want that new staff person. And it goes on for line items and for new programs. And what's nice is, throughout the school system, these all come back to the superintendent, and then they have discussions amongst each other as peers, where if somebody needs a new history teacher, but another building needs a new math teacher, they decide which is the priority for the year. It's a little bit, if you will, horse trading of, you know, I think I can, I can have that history teacher maybe in two years, but that math teacher is absolutely needed this year. So it's nice to see how they go through the process and the input that comes from the schools up to the superintendent. So I thought it was a good show-and-tell item for you, and so you guys can read that at your leisure. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor. Council Tontar.
Yeah, can I just add to that? The discussion at committee, we also discussed how the short-term budget goals of the school district align with the strategic plan, which is in the third year. And that, I mean, the, I thought, you know, once again, it was particularly transparent, what the school district is trying to accomplish. And they do have a five-year strategic plan, and the short-term goals are designed to get us to their long-term goals. And I thought that was important.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion. Any further discussion on this report? None. License and permits.
Nothing to report.
City services.
Nothing to report.
Planning and development.
Yes, Mr. President. Motion to remove Communication 199 to report armory conveyance.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Motion to receive and file. Discussion, Council Agaman.
So just to close the loop, we, in early September, September 3rd or 4th, we found out just last week that DCAM sent a notification to the Mass Historical Commission saying, "We're looking to sell the garage, what we use for our emergency services department," and nothing else. We didn't solve that mystery until last week, when we got a copy of it, because what we had was the Mass Historic Commission's response, where they responded as if they were selling everything, lock, stock, and barrel. And the problem, which I think the administration pointed out at our last meeting two weeks ago, for whatever reason, the National Guard or DCAM listed the entire collection of property on the state inventory of historic places, including this garage, which arguably is not historic and shouldn't have been listed. So they're going to have to unwind that. But all the committee was trying to do, and we recommend receiving and filing, is just get up to speed on what it was DCAM is up to. Were they selling all of the property, or some of it? And they do not identify future use, but they do identify that they want to sell the garage. And that's it.
Thank you, councillor. Further discussion? Or questions from the councillors at this time? All right, hearing none, we'll take a roll call on receiving and filing this matter.
Council McCauley.
Yes.
Council O'Brien.
Yes.
Council Shan.
Yes.
Council Tontar.
Yes.
Council Vogel.
Yes.
Council Zied.
Yes.
Council Agaman.
Yes.
Commission.
Second.
No discussion? All those in favor of taking this out of committee, say aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed? No? Motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Counsel O'Brien. Discussion, Counsel Ogum.
Consistent with our rules, we had a public hearing earlier tonight on the reappointment to the Historical Commission. Mr. Carnway has served before. He actually had some very interesting comments. One is, he could not recall in his ears staff ever attending the Historical Commission. So there's really nobody there who's a full-time employee for the city, helping them. I didn't realize that. Also, they haven't really had any training. So, for example, no one's actually taken out for them the sections of the code that are relevant to their job, and said, "Hey, read this." So those are a couple of things we could improve on, I think. But the committee unanimously endorsed Mr. Carnway for renomination.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this nomination? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on this appointment.
So motion approved, Appointment 129. Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tanta?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Ogum?
Yes.
Counsel Jenta?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
And the other one, committee counsel.
Point of information, did Order 86 make it into the packet? That's the first one, the amended recommendation for affordable housing trust funds? It's not underlined, but I don't have the full packet, so I don't know if it was in.
No, it, only those three items.
Okay. Motion to remove Communication 164, letter to Ward Two Counselor from Eric Goodness.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's out.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
And seconded by Counsel Jenta. Discussion, Counsel Ogum.
Just to fill you in on our discussion earlier this evening, Mr. Goodness attended in person. His letter, which is very detailed, for the benefit of the public, I'm sure most of the counselors remember, is a nine-page, single-spaced letter, having to do with a case at 193 High Street, the funeral home, had been before the zoning board several times earlier this year, and I think in 2018 as well. He's a property owner of an adjacent condominium. He had two points in his letter. I held this in committee for several months, but it's time to sort of report back and move on. The two points in his letter were first, at the time, the decision of the ZBA was going to be remanded, possibly voluntarily, back to the zoning board as a do-over. And as this counsel well knows, we've had many closed sessions about it. We've instructed the city solicitor not to remand it voluntarily, and that case is currently on appeal. So I don't think we need to get into those details. Second part of his letter were his own personal experiences interacting with the city, which he found distressing. And they had to do with the decision that had been issued, one of the decisions had been issued by the zoning board in April, I believe it was, or March. And to refresh everyone's recollection and to inform the public, a formal notice had gone out by mail to all of the butters and also the applicant, saying, "The decision is on file with the city clerk, and today starts the 20-day appeal period, so within those 20 days, you have to go to court to challenge the decision." What happened is that, after getting this notice, Mr. Goodness went to the department and asked for a copy of the decision, and was told that there was no such decision, that the notice had gone out of an error. Long story short, that all proved to be an untruth. There had been a decision lodged with the clerk, and it had been destroyed. And then misrepresented the facts to Mr. Goodness. He ended his letter with four questions, which we attempted to answer at the committee, and then we make a recommendation to this counsel, whether the counsel can take up or not. First question, who directed the staff administrator, administrative officer, Ms. Boizer to pull the decision? Quote, "Pull the decision," which was the way it was described by plaintiff's attorney in their lawsuit, that they had, plaintiff's attorney had personally called the then-chair of the zoning board at his home, and allegedly, he agreed that the decision had been issued in error, and then that's what set into motion these bizarre events. We don't know who, you know, we don't actually have a formal answer, the committee or the council, but our understanding, based on his resignation, is that the zoning board chair at the time, Ed Ramsdale, had directed her to pull the decision, which of course, without authorization, is a misdemeanor under state law. Next question, who actually pulled the decision? Who physically did it? Again, we don't have any formal answer on that, but we believe Diane Boizer did that, again, at the direction of Ed Ramsdale. Third question, I think, is the hardest one. Why was the story fabricated that the decision letter sent to a butters was sent in error, and that the zoning board of appeal never issued decisions for a bifurcated special permit application? I don't really know that, I mean, that's motivations. It is the key question, and I have to say, Mr. Goodness was quite frustrated that he doesn't know the answer. Final question, who directed that the story be told to a butters such as him? Again, don't know that for sure. And so hence, our recommendation is to receive and file this letter, but our understanding, based on representations earlier this year, starting in May, is that there was an internal investigation by the executive branch, but we've never been provided with any of the results. So when Mr. Goodness asked us, we had to say, "We don't know." So our recommendation, three to nothing, was that the city council request a copy of the result. And if it has to be in closed session, because it has to do with personnel files or whatever, so be it. But the council, we thought, would wanna know, given the involvement of the city and liability and our time spent on this, what happened. So that's our recommendation.
Is that a motion?
Is there a motion in that, Counselor?
I would make a move to direct the, the clerk to request a copy of the investigation report by the administration on this incident.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion of the motion.
Counsel Jenta. Just real quick, we did, we did thank the gentleman who wrote the letter, because I think many of us as counselors, I know that.
One moment, Counsel, I believe there's a.
Motion on the floor.
The receiving and file was on the floor, so this would be an amendment or an addition to that motion. Quite correct, so it's a motion to amend the receiving and file, motion to add this direction to the city clerk.
Second.
And seconded by Counsel O'Brien. Thank you for the correction, Counsel.
Hi, Good.
Counsel Jenta.
Okay, so take two. So we thanked the gentleman that had written the letter, because as many counselors probably had, I did. I got a phone call with sort of this outlandish story of papers disappearing, and it was almost hard to believe that it happened within our city hall. Him writing the letter and sending it in to us sort of, you know, kinda opened up that discussion with people, that in fact, this did happen in our city hall, and things needed to change, and, you know, now we're gonna be taping meetings and such, so there won't be that discrepancy. And one of the changes that we made even before this happened is, is we interview all applicants now on the planning and the zoning board, so, you know, we get a chance to talk to them as counselors. And, you know, we kinda told the applicant, "We're doing our best on our level, just to make sure that if there are errors or things that happen in the future, that we are trying to fix them. We're trying to make it so the planning and the zoning board are doing a great job for the residents." And, you know, he had some very good questions that we couldn't answer, and it was suggested, you know, that the executive branch, the mayor, is really the one that wanted to handle this. So our discussion sort of led to, "Well, then we should probably get a report to find out, you know, what does the mayor know, what conclusions has she come to?" So, thank you.
Further discussion? Of the amendment. Hearing none, we'll take a roll call on the amendment.
Okay. This is a roll call on the motion to amend, to request the clerk to ask the copy of the investigation by the executive branch into this matter, represented by Communication 164. Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tanta?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Ogum?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
Now we have a motion to receive and file and as amended.
The motion to receive and file is before us, is there for any additional discussion on that motion? Counsel Ogum.
Yeah, I'll just finish up my committee report, piggybacking on that. Mr. Goodness had two suggestions. As you can imagine, he's been to quite a lot of zoning board of appeal meetings, and he confirmed what we've been hearing from others, too, which is that the deliberations haven't been rooted enough in the actual code, you know, the actual technical code. And I did offer a glimmer of hope to Mr. Goodness, which is that we, the department, after many years, did actually offer and sponsor a training just last week. Now, it's not a mandatory training, so it's kind of a baby step, but, you know, that, you know, we need to start really pushing the law and not emotion, was his recommendation. So that was one thing. The other thing he noted was, he, of course, has been spurred into, you know, after being completely unaware of how zoning and planning work, or city hall, he's now hyper-alert, and he's reviewed our proposed rezoning, at least the drafts that have been sitting on the website for a while, and had some recommendations, again, about checks and balances, and not giving too much authority to one zoning administrator or one chair of a board, where the previous chair had been writing the decisions and not showing even the drafts to the colleagues on the board, but unilaterally sending them out. So, and interestingly, Mr. Carnway said that's actually how they had been rolling with the previous chair at the Historical Commission, too. So that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
And by the way, I'll hold my tone. Further discussion? Hearing none, the recommendation is to receive and file, is that correct?
Received and filed as amended.
As amended. Roll call, please.
Counsel McCauley?
Yes.
Counsel O'Brien?
Yes.
Counsel Shan?
Yes.
Counsel Tanta?
Yes.
Counsel Vogel?
Yes.
Counsel Zied?
Yes.
Counsel Ogum?
Yes.
Counsel Jenta?
Yes.
Counsel Khan?
Yes.
Counsel Connell?
Yes.
And the other one, committee counsel.
No, sir.
Public Utilities?
Rules?
Nothing tonight.
Good of the order.
Good.
Mr. Clerk?
I just wanted to say a short, good luck, without getting emotional. Thank you very much. For your service. The one thing people didn't mention tonight, other than your basketball prowess, is how much you know about the city. It's incredible institution. Thank you very much. Good pleasure serving with you, too.
And in my 16 years in the council, I don't think I've ever known another counselor who had such a deep and abiding affection for the people of this city. Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
Have further comments? Go to the order. Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Remove.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I need signatures from everybody. I need your votes. I'm not going there.[1574.04]